Sir, tell me again why I shouldn't put a bullet in you right now, cobbler, the man growled, dust gathering on his sweat-beaded brow.
Because your aim is worse than your judgment, marshal, replied Thomas Reed, his weathered fingers adjusting the worn leather vest that hung loose on his frame. The click of the marshal's revolver hammer echoed across the wooden porch, causing several onlookers to flinch back against the trading post's wall. A distant coyote's howl punctuated the tension. Five days earlier, Thomas had been content in his shop, mending the boots and shoes of Cottonwood Springs residents. He'd come west after the war, looking to leave behind memories as tattered as the soles he now repaired.
Oh, guy ain't playing games here, the marshal said, stepping closer. That wagon was county property, and you had no business touching it.
Thomas wiped his brow with a handkerchief. Your deputy asked me to look at it. Said the wheel was giving trouble. Looking is different from what you did.
I fixed it, didn't I? The marshal's moustache twitched. Ah, nobody fixes a broken wagon wheel with...
It wasn't broken, Thomas interjected, just loose where the iron rim meets the wood. Needed a temporary fix till the blacksmith returns. A tall woman in a dusty riding skirt pushed through the gathering crowd. Her dark hair was pinned up beneath a practical hat, and her expression suggested she had little patience for the scene unfolding.
Marshal Hardin, what exactly is the problem here? The marshal turned, his gun still trained on Thomas. Stay out of this, Miss Eleanor. This concerns county business.
Eleanor Wells folded her arms across her chest. It concerns my freight shipment that needs to get to Fort Branson by tomorrow. Mister... Reed here was kind enough to assist when your wagon broke down with my supplies in it.
Thomas noticed how the sunlight caught in Eleanor's hair, highlighting strands of auburn among the brown. He'd repaired her riding boots twice since she'd arrived in town three months ago to take over her late uncle's freight business. Each time, she'd talked to him like he was a person worth listening to. Not just the town's cobbler.
The problem, Miss Wells, Marshal Hardin said, puffing up his chest where his brass star caught the light, is that this man has taken it upon himself to repair county property with some kind of... Eastern foolishness.
Thomas sighed. It's reinforced canvas tape, waterproof, used it in the army to fix all manner of things.
On a wagon wheel. The marshal scoffed. The wheel isn't broken, Thomas repeated.
The iron rim was coming loose from the wood. The tape holds it steady until proper repairs can be made.
Eleanor stepped closer to examine the wagon. Thomas tried not to notice how she smelled of lavender soap beneath the trail dust.
The wagon sat at the edge of the trading post's loading dock, one wheel wrapped partially with a strip of heavy, adhesive-coated canvas, Thomas's own invention he'd perfected during the war.
Ah, will it hold all the way to Fort Branson? Eleanor asked, kneeling to inspect his handiwork. Before Thomas could answer, the trading post's door swung open. Councilman Williams emerged, followed by the other three members of Cottonwood Springs Town Council. Williams, expensive suit and watch chain, marked him as one of the town's wealthiest residents.
Ah, what's this commotion? Williams demanded, his eyes narrowing when he spotted Thomas. The cobbler causing trouble again.
No trouble, sir, Thomas said, keeping his voice even. Just explaining my temporary fix for the wagon. Councilman Williams approached the wagon, his face screwing up in distaste as he examined the wheel.
What in tarnation is this? You've put some kind of sticky paper on a wheel. It's reinforced canvas tape, sir, waterproof and... It's nonsense is what it is, Williams interrupted. Marshal, this man has damaged county property. I want him arrested, the crowd murmured.
Thomas felt the familiar tightness in his chest that preceded trouble.
Now, hold on, Eleanor interjected. I've paid good money to have my freight delivered. If the cobbler says this will hold until Fort Branson, I believe him.
With all due respect, Miss Wells... Councilman Miller chimed in, adjusting his spectacles. What does a woman know about wagon repairs?
Eleanor's eyes flashed. Enough to know that I've been waiting three days for someone to fix that wheel properly while my freight sits here costing me money. If Mister Reed has found a solution, I say we test it.
Thomas appreciated her support, but the councilman's expressions remained skeptical. He could feel his chance to prove himself slipping away. A test, then, Thomas suggested, stepping forward despite the marshal's warning glare. Let me drive the wagon to the creek and back. If the wheel holds, Miss Wells gets her freight delivered. If it fails, I'll pay for a new wheel myself.
The councilmen huddled together whispering. Finally, Williams turned back. Fine, to the creek and back, but Marshal Hardin goes with you.
Thomas nodded, trying to hide his relief. He climbed onto the wagon seat, feeling the worn wood beneath him. Marshal Hardin holstered his revolver reluctantly and mounted his horse alongside.
Ha, this is a waste of time, the marshal muttered as they set off.
Thomas ignored him, focusing instead on handling the team carefully, avoiding any sudden movements that might strain his repair. The wagon rumbled down Cottonwood Springs Main Street, drawing curious stares from residents. He could feel the marshal's eyes boring into him, waiting for failure. The creek lay about a mile outside of town, and as they approached the rough terrain leading down to it, Thomas slowed the team. The wagon creaked as it navigated the uneven ground, and Thomas held his breath when they crossed the shallow creek itself, water splashing against the wheels.
See there, the marshal said as they climbed the opposite bank. It's already coming loose.
Thomas looked down and saw that a corner of his tape had indeed peeled back slightly. His stomach sank. He hadn't accounted for the water dissolving some of the adhesive so quickly.
We should head back, the marshal said, a note of triumph in his voice.
Just a moment, Thomas replied, climbing down from the wagon. He reached into his pocket and pulled out a small tin. Opening it revealed more of his specialized tape, cut into strips and ready for use.
You brought more of that nonsense, the marshal scowled.
A cobbler is always prepared, Thomas said, kneeling beside the wheel. He carefully reapplied the loose section, pressing it firmly into place, then added another strip for reinforcement.
And this should hold it better, the marshal made a dismissive sound, but waited as Thomas climbed back onto the wagon.
They turned around and headed back toward town, the wheels now rolling smoother than before. As they approached Cottonwood Springs, Thomas could see the crowd had grown. It seemed half the town had gathered to witness the outcome of his unorthodox repair. Eleanor stood at the front, her expression unreadable as she watched their return. Thomas guided the wagon to a stop in front of the trading post where the councilman waited with crossed arms and skeptical expressions.
Well, Councilman Williams demanded.
It held, Thomas said simply.
The marshal dismounted scowling. Barely, part of it came loose at the creek.
Which I fixed, Thomas added. And that's the beauty of this method. Quick repairs on the trail if needed.
Councilman Williams walked around the wagon, examining the wheel critically. I still don't trust it for a journey to Fort Branson. That's two days of hard travel.
I've used this technique in worse conditions during the war, Thomas insisted. It will hold if you don't push the team too hard.
Eleanor stepped forward. And I'll take that chance, councilman. My freight needs to move, and Mister Reed's solution is the only one offered so far.
It's not proper, Councilman Miller protested. Wagon should be fixed with proper tools, by a wheelwright or blacksmith.
Neither of whom is available, Eleanor countered. Sometimes, practicality must trump tradition.
Thomas noticed how the councilman bristled at this, particularly Williams, whose family had founded Cottonwood Springs. To them, tradition was everything. Part of why Thomas, with his eastern education and unusual ideas, had never quite fit in despite living here for three years. I'll tell you what, Thomas said, an idea forming. I'll drive the wagon myself. If my repair fails, I take full responsibility. This caused a stir among the onlookers.
Eleanor looked at him with surprise. You're a cobbler, not a teamster, Marshal Hardin scoffed.
I drove supply wagons during the war, Thomas replied evenly. I can handle a team.
Eleanor studied him for a moment. It's my freight and my risk I accept Mister Reed's offer.
Now, hold on, Councilman Williams protested. That wagon is county property, you can't just...
The county leased it to my company for this delivery, Eleanor interrupted. The contract gives me discretion over who drives it. She turned to Thomas. When can you be ready to leave?
First light tomorrow, Thomas replied, trying to mask his surprise at this turn of events. The councilmen grumbled among themselves but couldn't argue with the contract terms. The crowd began to disperse, some looking disappointed at the lack of more dramatic confrontation. As Thomas turned to leave, Eleanor caught his arm.
Are you certain about this, Mister Reed? Fort Branson is a difficult journey, Thomas nodded.
I'm certain, Miss Wells, and please, call me Thomas.
Then I'm Eleanor, she replied with a small smile. But I have one condition. I'm coming with you, Thomas felt his eyebrows raise. It's not a comfortable journey for a lady. The look she gave him could have withered a cactus.
I've made it dozens of times, Mister Reed, Thomas. It's my business after all, he inclined his head, properly chastised. Of course, I'll be ready at dawn. That evening, Thomas carefully packed additional supplies, extra strips of his reinforced tape, tools for adjustments, and personal provisions for the journey. As he worked, he couldn't help but wonder what had possessed him to volunteer. Was it pride? The need to prove his unusual methods had merit? Or was it the way Eleanor had stood up for him, believing in him when no one else did? Morning arrived with a golden haze settling over Cottonwood Springs. Thomas arrived at the trading post to find Eleanor already there, dressed in practical traveling clothes, a split riding skirt, sturdy boots which he'd repaired last month, and a man's cotton shirt topped with a fitted vest. Her hair was braided and tucked beneath a wide-brimmed hat. You're early, he observed, securing his pack to the wagon.
Always am, she replied, checking the freight manifest one final time.
Punctuality is good business, Thomas nodded appreciatively. The freight consisted of dry goods, mail, and several crates marked as machine parts. He inspected his wheel repair in the early light, adding one more strip of tape where he thought it might need reinforcement.
Is it going to hold, Eleanor asked, watching him work.
It will, he assured her.
Are the tape bonds better as it sets overnight? She seemed to accept this explanation, climbing onto the wagon seat with practiced ease.
Thomas joined her, taking up the reins. He was acutely aware of her presence beside him, her shoulder occasionally brushing his as the wagon moved. They were about to set off when Marshal Hardin approached on horseback.
Hold up there, he called, trotting alongside.
Thomas felt his jaw tighten. Something wrong, Marshal?
The council sent me to escort you, Hardin said with obvious displeasure. Make sure county property is returned intact.
Eleanor frowned. That's not necessary. The contract...
Isn't about escorts, Hardin finished for her. Consider it a courtesy.
Thomas and Eleanor exchanged a look. They both knew it was no courtesy, but rather the council's way of keeping tabs on them and perhaps hoping to witness failure. Fine, Thomas said finally, but we're not waiting if you fall behind. With that, he flicked the reins and the wagon lurched forward. As they passed the town limits, Thomas felt a curious mix of apprehension and excitement. He'd rarely left Cottonwood Springs since settling there, content to stay within the confines of his small shop. Now here he was, heading out on the trail with a woman he admired and a marshal who despised him, all because of his unconventional repair technique. The morning passed uneventfully as they followed the rutted trail toward Fort Branson. Marshal Hardin kept his distance, riding about fifty yards behind them. The wagon's reinforced wheel performed perfectly, with no sign of weakness despite the rough terrain.
How did you learn to make that tape, Eleanor asked as they stopped at midday to rest the horses.
Thomas handed her a canteen. During the war, I was assigned to a supply unit, and we were always short on proper repair materials. I experimented with canvas scraps, pine resin, and beeswax, until I found a combination that worked as an adhesive.
Ingenious, she remarked, taking a sip of water.
The other men thought I was crazy at first, Thomas admitted. Until my fixes held while traditional repairs failed in bad weather.
Eleanor studied him. Is that why you became a cobbler? Because you're good with repairs?
Thomas shook his head. But my father was a cobbler back in Pennsylvania. I learned the trade from him before the war, he paused, memories surfacing. Afterwards, it seemed the only thing I was still good at.
She nodded, not pressing for details, which he appreciated. Many civilians ask too many questions about the war, seeking exciting stories rather than understanding the realities.
Marshal Hardin approached, interrupting their conversation. Ah, how's that fancy repair holding up, he asked, not bothering to hide his skepticism.
See for yourself, Thomas replied, gesturing to the wheel. The marshal bent to inspect it, frowning when he found no signs of failure.
We've got another fifteen miles today, plenty of time for it to come apart. Your confidence is overwhelming, Eleanor said dryly.
They continued their journey through the afternoon, the landscape gradually changing from scrubby flatlands to rolling hills dotted with junipers and pines. The trail became more challenging, with steep inclines that tested both the horses and Thomas's repair. As they navigated a particularly rough stretch, Thomas heard a worrying crack from the wagon. He pulled the team to a halt and quickly climbed down to investigate.
Now, what is it, Eleanor asked, concern evident in her voice.
Thomas knelt beside the wheel he'd repaired. The tape was holding firm, but a new problem had developed, a crack in one of the spokes of a different wheel.
Trouble, Marshal Hardin asked, dismounting his horse.
Small crack in this spoke, Thomas explained, pointing to the damage. Not related to my repair, the marshal examined it.
And that's going to snap clean through if we keep going, Thomas assessed the situation.
They were still at least ten miles from the next waystation, with daylight fading. Stopping here for the night would put them behind schedule. I can fix it, he said finally.
Marshal Hardin laughed. With your magic tape, a spoke needs proper woodworking. The tape will reinforce it enough to reach the waystation, Thomas insisted.
Hmm, we just need to reduce the load on this side.
Eleanor was already redistributing some of the freight. We can shift these lighter crates to the other side.
Thomas nodded appreciatively and set to work, cutting strips of his reinforced tape and carefully wrapping them around the cracked spoke e, building up layers for strength. As he worked, he was aware of Marshal Hardin watching with undisguised skepticism.
This is fool's work, the marshal commented. That tape won't hold weight.
It's not bearing the full weight, Thomas explained patiently. It's just keeping the crack from spreading until we can get a proper repair.
Eleanor finished redistributing the load and came to inspect his work. It looks sound to me.
You're both asking for trouble, Marshal Hardin warned. And we should make camp and continue in the morning.
And miss my delivery deadline. No, thank you, Eleanor replied firmly. I trust Mister Reed's judgment, Thomas tried not to show how much her words affected him. Trust was something he'd found in short supply since returning from the war.
They continued more slowly now, Thomas keeping a careful eye on the repaired spoke. Marshal Hardin rode closer to the wagon, clearly expecting catastrophe at any moment. The sun began to set, painting the landscape in amber hues. As darkness fell, they finally spotted the lights of the waystation in the distance. Thomas felt a surge of relief. They'd make it, both his repairs had held, his. The waystation was a simple affair, a sturdy cabin with an attached stable, offering basic accommodations for travelers along the Fort Branson route. As they pulled in, the stationkeeper, a grizzled older man named Buchanan, came out to greet them. Miss Wells, he acknowledged with the tip of his hat. Right on schedule as usual.
Evening, Mister Buchanan, Eleanor replied. We'll need space in the stable and a repair to one of our wheels before morning.
Buchanan approached the wagon, lantern in hand. Which wheel needs work? Thomas pointed out the cracked spoke, now securely wrapped in his reinforced tape. Buchanan bent to examine it, his bushy eyebrows rising in surprise. What in tarnation is this, he asked, poking at the tape. My temporary repair, Thomas explained. It gets reinforced canvas tape, Buchanan straightened up, looking from Thomas to the wheel and back again. Been running stations for twenty-seven years and never seen anything like it. He prodded the tape again. Seems to be holding, though, Marshal Hardin snorted. It's not proper. And that other wheel has tape on it too, where the iron rim meets the wood. Buchanan turned his attention to Thomas's original repair, examining it with professional interest. Hmm, creative solution, I'll give you that.
Can you replace the cracked spoke by morning, Eleanor asked, steering the conversation back to practical matters.
Got some seasoned oak that'll do the job, Buchanan confirmed. Can't do much about the rim without a blacksmith, though. The tape is holding it fine, Thomas said. It should last a fort Branson if we're careful. Buchanan nodded slowly. If you say so. Never would have thought of it myself, but I respect innovation when I see it. This unexpected validation from an experienced stationkeeper seemed to irritate Marshal Hardin, who muttered something under his breath and led his horse toward the stable. After arranging for the spoke repair and securing rooms for the night, Thomas found himself sitting alone on the waystation's porch, enjoying the cool evening air. The distant howl of coyotes reminded him of the first day's confrontation back in Cottonwood Springs. The door opened behind him, and Eleanor emerged, carrying two cups of coffee. She handed one to Thomas and settled into the chair beside him. Thank you, he said, grateful for both the coffee and the company.
I should be thanking you, she replied. Your unusual repairs saved my delivery schedule, Thomas smiled slightly.
The journey's only half done, but you've proven your point already. The council was wrong to doubt you. People usually prefer traditional methods, Thomas said, staring into his coffee, especially in small towns.
Eleanor was quiet for a moment. Is that why you stay in Cottonwood Springs? It doesn't seem to appreciate your innovative thinking, the question caught him off guard.
I suppose I stayed because it was... Safe, predictable, he looked up at the star-filled sky. After the war, I needed predictable. And now, Thomas considered this. Now I'm sitting on a porch in the middle of nowhere, drinking coffee with a fascinating woman, all because I challenged the predictable. In the lantern light, he could see a faint blush color her cheeks. Fascinating, am I? A woman running her own freight business in this territory?
Absolutely, Eleanor smiled, though it didn't quite reach her eyes. It wasn't my first choice. My uncle's death left me few options. Yet you've made it thrive, from what I hear. It's been a challenge, she admitted.
Many clients were reluctant to work with a woman, some still are, Thomas nodded, understanding. We both know something about having to prove ourselves repeatedly. They sat in comfortable silence for a while, sipping their coffee and listening to the night sounds. Thomas found himself more relaxed than he'd been in years, despite the stress of the journey and the repairs still to be tested.
What will you do when we return to Cottonwood Springs, Eleanor asked eventually.
I go back to fixing boots, I suppose. Even if your tape proves more valuable than bootmaking, Thomas hadn't considered this possibility. I hadn't thought that far ahead.
You should, Eleanor said seriously. That tape of yours could be useful for all sorts of repairs. Trail fixes when proper materials aren't available.
The council would never accept it, Thomas pointed out.
The council isn't the entire territory, Eleanor countered. Fort Branson has a quartermaster always looking for innovative solutions for the cavalry patrols. The idea took root in Thomas's mind. Could his wartime necessity become something more? Before he could respond, Marshal Hardin stepped onto the porch. Stationkeeper says the spoke is repaired, he announced. We leave at first light. Eleanor stood. Thank you, Marshal. Good night, gentlemen. As she disappeared inside, Thomas felt the comfortable moment shatter. He finished his coffee in silence and soon followed, needing rest before the next day's journey. Morning brought clear skies and the promise of heat later in the day. Thomas inspected the wagon, finding Buchanan had done excellent work, replacing the cracked spoke. His tape repair on the wheel rim remained solid.
Should hold fine now, Buchanan commented, watching Thomas's inspection. Though I'm mighty curious about that tape of yours. Might be useful around the station. I could leave you some, Thomas offered, reaching for his pack. Buchanan's eyes lit up. Much obliged. They set off as the sun crested the hills, making good time on the better-maintained section of trail. Marshal Hardin continued his escort duty, though he seemed less attentive to the wagon's wheels now that a proper repair had been made to the spoke. By midday, they'd covered significant ground. Fort Branson was now only about eight hours away, if they maintained their pace. Thomas allowed himself to believe they would complete the journey without further incident. That hope was dashed when they rounded a bend to find the trail ahead washed out by what appeared to be recent flash flooding. A section about twenty feet wide had been carved away, leaving a steep-sided gully. End of the line, Marshal Hardin declared with poorly-hidden satisfaction. No way to get the wagon across that.
Eleanor surveyed the damage. There must be another route.
Nearest alternative adds a full day, Hardin replied. You'll miss your delivery deadline, Thomas studied the washed-out section carefully.
The gully wasn't extremely deep, perhaps seven feet at most, but its steep sides would indeed make it impossible for the wagon to cross directly.
We could build a temporary bridge, he suggested. Marshal Hardin laughed. With what?
Air and wishes, Thomas ignored him, already formulating a plan. There are pine trees nearby. If we cut several small ones, we could lay them across the gap. Even if we could fell trees with the tools we have, which is doubtful, they wouldn't support the wagon's weight, Hardin argued. They would if we distribute the weight properly, Thomas countered. He turned to Eleanor. We'd need to unload the freight, carry it across separately, then get the empty wagon over and reload on the other side.
Eleanor considered this. It would be labor-intensive, but possible.
It's foolishness, Hardin insisted, and dangerous.
Do you have a better suggestion, Marshal, Eleanor challenged. When Hardin had no immediate response, they set to work. Using the axe from the wagon's toolkit, Thomas began felling several slender pine trees, while Eleanor organized the freight into manageable portions for carrying. Despite his protests, Marshal Hardin eventually joined in, helping Thomas drag the fell trees to the washed-out section. By mid-afternoon, they had six trees trimmed and positioned across the gap.
It's not gonna hold, Hardin predicted, as Thomas bound the makeshift bridge together with rope.
It doesn't need to be permanent, Thomas explained. Just strong enough for one crossing. Once the bridge was assembled, they began the tedious process of carrying the freight across piece by piece. The sun beat down mercilessly as they worked, and Thomas felt sweat soaking through his shirt. Eleanor worked alongside him without complaint, carrying boxes and parcels across the precarious bridge. With the freight safely transferred, the next challenge was getting the empty wagon across. Thomas unhitched the horses and led them around the gully via a narrow animal path he'd discovered nearby. Now comes the real test, he said, surveying the lightweight but still substantial wagon.
This is madness, Marshal Hardin declared, wiping sweat from his brow. That bridge won't hold.
We've come too far to turn back, Eleanor said firmly.
Thomas attached ropes to the wagon's front axle. We'll pull it by hand, slowly. With Eleanor and Hardin on the far side pulling the ropes and Thomas guiding from behind, they began inching the wagon onto the makeshift bridge. The pine logs creaked ominously under the weight. Steady, Thomas called as the front wheels rolled onto the bridge. Keep it centered, the wagon moved slowly forward, the bridge sagging slightly but holding. As the rear wheels reached the edge, Thomas felt a surge of optimism. They were going to make it. Then came a sharp crack as one of the logs split. The wagon lurched sideways, its left rear wheel slipping off the bridge. Thomas lunged forward, throwing his weight against the wagon bed to prevent it from tipping into the gully. Pull, he shouted to Eleanor and Hardin. Hard as you can, they heaved on the ropes, while Thomas pushed from behind. For a terrifying moment, nothing happened. Then, gradually, the wagon righted itself and continued forward, reaching solid ground on the far side with a final lurch. Thomas collapsed onto the ground, breathing hard. Eleanor rushed to his Eleanor rushed to his side. Are you all right? She asked, concern evident in her voice. He nodded, too winded to speak immediately. Even Marshall Harden looked impressed, though he quickly masked it. Lucky, the marshal muttered. Pure luck. Once Thomas had caught his breath, they hitched the horses back to the wagon and reloaded the freight. The delay had cost them hours, and the sun was now low in the sky. We'll have to push on after dark if we're to reach Fort Branson by morning, Eleanor said, checking her pocket watch. Thomas nodded agreement. The trail is good from here. We can make it. They continued their journey as twilight fell, the horses maintaining a steady pace despite the long day. Marshall Harden rode ahead, scouting the trail in the fading light. As night fully descended, they lit the wagon's lanterns, casting a small pool of illumination on the trail ahead. Thomas and Eleanor sat side by side on the wagon seat, their shoulders touching in the darkness. You were remarkable back there, Eleanor said softly. Quick thinking and brave. Thomas felt warmth that had nothing to do with the evening temperature. It was a team effort. Still, she persisted, most men would have given up when the trail washed out. Taken the longer route without question. I'm not most men, he replied simply. No, she agreed. You're not. After a pause, she added. Cottonwood Springs doesn't deserve you. The statement hung in the air between them, laden with meaning. Before Thomas could respond, Marshall Harden rode back to them. Trails clear ahead, he reported. Should reach Fort Branson by dawn if we don't stop. They continued through the night, taking turns driving the wagon to allow for brief rest. The stars wheeled overhead and the temperature dropped, prompting Eleanor to move closer to Thomas for warmth. He found himself hyper-aware of her presence, of the scent of lavender that somehow persisted despite days on the trail. As the first light of dawn broke on the horizon, the outline of Fort Branson appeared in the distance. The military outpost stood on a rise, its wooden walls a welcome sight after their arduous journey. We made it, Eleanor said, a note of wonder in her voice. And your wheel repair held the entire way. Thomas smiled, fatigue momentarily forgotten. He never doubted it. They reached the fort as the morning bugle sounded, announcing their arrival to the still-waking occupants. The gates swung open, revealing the busy interior of the outpost. Soldiers moved about their morning duties, while civilian contractors prepared for the day's work. The quartermaster, a stout man named Sergeant Willis, met them at the freight office. His eyebrows rose when he saw their exhausted state. Miss Wells, he greeted Eleanor. Didn't expect your delivery until tomorrow, given the reports of trail washouts. We found an alternative solution, Eleanor replied, climbing down from the wagon. Thanks largely to Mr. Reed here. Sergeant Willis oversaw the unloading of the freight, checking each item against his manifest. Everything appears in order, he confirmed, signing the delivery receipt. The major will be pleased to have these parts ahead of schedule. As the soldiers unloaded the last of the crates, Willis noticed Thomas's tape repair on the wheel. What in blazes is this? He asked, bending to examine it. My temporary fix for a loose iron rim, Thomas explained, too tired to elaborate further. To his surprise, Willis looked impressed rather than skeptical. Ingenious field repair, Thomas nodded. Learned it during the war. Which division, Willis asked sharply. Pennsylvania Eighty-Third, Thomas replied. Supply Corps. Willis straightened. I was with the Ninety-First. Gettysburg. And Antietam before that. The sergeant nodded with newfound respect. We could use thinking like yours around here, always short on proper repair materials for the patrol wagons. Eleanor stepped forward. Mister... Reed has developed quite an effective repair tape. Perhaps a demonstration would be in order. Thomas shot her a questioning look. But she merely smiled encouragingly. I'd be interested to see it. Willis agreed. Over the next hour, Thomas found himself demonstrating his reinforced canvas tape on various equipment around the fort. Sergeant Willis watched with growing interest, particularly when Thomas showed how the tape could be used to repair a leaking water barrel in minutes. The army's always looking for field expedient solutions, Willis commented. Especially out here where supplies are limited. Marshall Harden, who had been silent throughout this exchange, finally spoke up. It's not proper repairs. Just temporary fixes. Out here, Marshal, Willis replied, temporary fixes that actually work are worth their weight in gold. By midday, Thomas had received an unexpected offer, a contract to supply the fort with his specialized tape, with potential for wider distribution to other outposts if it performed well. I... I don't know what to say, Thomas stammered, overwhelmed by the sudden opportunity. Say yes, Eleanor urged quietly beside him. Marshall Harden looked thoroughly displeased. The council won't like this, using county resources for personal gain. What county resources, Thomas countered. I developed this tape myself, using my own materials. Willis looked between them, sensing tension. Whatever disagreements you have can be settled back in Cottonwood Springs. For now. Mister... Reed, I need your answer on the contract. Thomas took a deep breath. Yes, I accept. After finalizing the details with Sergeant Willis, Thomas found himself with an army contract and a future he hadn't imagined possible when he'd left Cottonwood Springs just days ago. As they prepared for the return journey the following morning, Eleanor approached him in the fort's courtyard. Congratulations on your contract, she said, smiling. It's well-deserved. Thank you, Thomas replied, and thank you for believing in me when no one else did. She studied him for a moment. What will you do now? Will you expand your shop in Cottonwood Springs? Thomas considered this. The thought of returning to his small cobblers shop, even with the new army contract, felt strangely confining now. I'm not sure Cottonwood Springs is where I should be anymore, he admitted. Eleanor nodded slowly. Fort Branson could use someone with your skills, and my freight business makes regular runs here. The implication hung in the air between them. Before Thomas could respond, Marshall Harden interrupted, announcing it was time to depart. The return journey to Cottonwood Springs was markedly different from their outbound trip. The marshal rode ahead most of the time, clearly eager to return and report to the council. Thomas and Eleanor traveled in the wagon, now empty except for their personal belongings and samples of Thomas's tape for Willis to send to regional headquarters. They reached the washed-out section of trail and found their makeshift bridge still intact. Crossing it was easier with the unloaded wagon, though Thomas reinforced it with more rope before attempting the passage. You're always thinking ahead, Eleanor observed as they continued their journey. Planning for contingencies. Force of habit, Thomas replied. In the war, not anticipating problems got men killed. They made better time on the return journey, stopping at the waystation where Buchanan greeted them with interest. Your tape repair still holding, he asked Thomas. Like it was meant to be there, Thomas confirmed. Buchanan nodded appreciatively. Been thinking about what you showed me. Could use more of that tape if you're willing to part with some. Thomas smiled. I can do better than that. I'll show you how to make it. The next morning, they set out for the final leg of the journey back to Cottonwood Springs. Marshall Harden had ridden ahead, presumably to report to the council before their arrival. Thomas didn't mind. It gave him more time alone with Eleanor. Have you considered what you'll do when we return? She asked, as the wagon rolled steadily along the trail. Thomas nodded. I've been thinking about it constantly. The army contract changes everything. Will you stay in Cottonwood Springs? I'm not sure I belong there anymore, he admitted. Never really did. Eleanor was quiet for a moment. I've been considering opening a second office in Fort Branson. The business is growing, and having a presence there would make sense. That sounds like a good move, Thomas said, trying to keep his voice neutral despite the way his heart quickened at the implication. It would be, she agreed. Especially if I had a partner with connections to the army. Thomas glanced at her, finding her watching him with an intensity that made his breath catch. A business partner, a small smile played at her lips. For starters, the moment was interrupted by the distant sight of Cottonwood Springs coming into view. Thomas felt a curious mix of emotions. Relief at completing their journey, pride in his successful repair, and uncertainty about what awaited them. As they approached the town, Thomas could see a small crowd gathered near the trading post. The council members stood at the front, their expressions grim. Marshall Harden sat on his horse nearby, looking satisfied. Seems we're expected, Eleanor observed. Thomas steered the wagon to a stop before the assembled group. Councilman Williams stepped forward, his face set in stern lines. Mister Reed, he began formally. Marshall Harden has informed us of your... Activities at Fort Branson. My activities, Thomas asked, climbing down from the wagon. Using county property to secure a private contract, Williams clarified. Highly irregular. Eleanor joined Thomas on the ground. Gentlemen, Mister Reed's repair saved my freight delivery and impressed the army quartermaster enough to offer him a contract. Cottonwood Springs should be celebrating his ingenuity. Councilman Miller adjusted his spectacles. The issue, Miss Wells, is one of propriety. Mister Reed modified county property with his unusual methods, then leveraged that modification for personal gain. Thomas felt his patience wearing thin. The wagon returned in better condition than it left, with all wheels intact. The contract I secured was based on demonstrating my own invention, which I developed years before touching your wagon. The crowd murmured, some nodding in agreement with Thomas. He noticed several of his regular customers watching with interest, including the blacksmith who had finally returned to town. Furthermore, Thomas continued, my repair method saved the county the expense of a new wheel or iron rim, which would have cost significantly more than the materials I used. Williams frowned. Nevertheless, the council feels... The council, Eleanor interrupted, should recognize innovation when they see it. Mister... Reed's method could be valuable to the entire territory. The councilmen exchanged glances, clearly not having expected such a direct challenge. Thomas decided to press his advantage. Gentlemen, I've secured an army contract that will bring business and recognition to Cottonwood Springs. I think the town council would appreciate such enterprise. Councilman Williams cleared his throat. While we appreciate enterprise, Mister... Reed, we must ensure that all business conducted in Cottonwood Springs adheres to proper standards and traditions. A new voice joined the conversation. Sometimes tradition needs to step aside for progress. Thomas turned to see Buchanan, the waystation keeper dismounting from his horse. He hadn't expected the man to follow them to town. Mister Buchanan, Williams acknowledged with surprise. Bay. What brings you to Cottonwood Springs? Buchanan approached, nodding respectfully to the council. Came to place an order with Mister Reed for his repair tape. Saved me considerable trouble at the station already. This unexpected endorsement from a respected figure in the territory seemed to give the council pause. Williams looked less certain as he glanced between Buchanan and Thomas. You've used this... Tape method yourself, Miller asked Buchanan. Fixed a leaking roof and a broken harness, Buchanan confirmed. Holds better than anything I've tried before. The blacksmith stepped forward from the crowd. I'd like to see this repair of yours, Reed. Marshall Harden described it, but I can hardly believe a wagon made it to Fort Branson and back with tape holding the wheel together. Thomas gestured to the wagon. See for yourself. The iron rim was coming loose from the wood. My tape held it in place the entire journey, even through a creek crossing and rough terrain. The blacksmith examined the wheel carefully, probing the tape with experienced fingers. I'll be damned, he muttered. It's holding solid, he straightened up. Who wouldn't have believed it if I hadn't seen it? Councilman Williams seemed to realize the tide of public opinion was turning. Well, he said, adopting a more conciliatory tone. Innovation has always been part of the frontier spirit, I suppose. Indeed, it has, Eleanor agreed smoothly. And Mister... Reed's innovation stands to bring considerable business to Cottonwood Springs. Thomas caught the slight emphasis she placed on "to Cottonwood Springs", understanding her subtle negotiating tactic. She was giving the council a face-saving way to back down. Perhaps, Williams conceded, we've been hasty in our judgment. The council will need to discuss this development more thoroughly. While you discuss, Eleanor said. Mister... Reed and I have business matters to settle, if you'll excuse us. Without waiting for a response, she took Thomas's arm and guided him away from the crowd toward her office on the other side of the street. Thomas followed willingly, aware of the eyes watching them, but finding he cared less than he might have just days ago. Eleanor's office was a small but well-organized space above the general store. A large map of the territory dominated one wall, with pins marking regular delivery routes. A solid desk occupied the center of the room, covered with neat stacks of paperwork. They'll come around, Eleanor said, as she closed the door behind them. Williams can't resist the possibility of Cottonwood Springs gaining recognition as a center of innovation. Thomas smiled. You handled them masterfully. Years of negotiating freight contracts with difficult clients, she replied with a shrug. But now to more important matters. She gestured for him to sit as she settled behind her desk. We need to discuss your plans. Thomas took the offered chair. I've been thinking about your suggestion. About Fort Branson. And... Her expression remained professionally neutral, but Thomas caught a hint of something more in her eyes. I think it makes sense, he said carefully. For the business. A small smile played at her lips. Just for the business? Thomas held her gaze. No, not just for the business. The professional facade softened. I've watched you for three years, Thomas. Fixing the town's boots, keeping to yourself, never causing trouble. I always wondered what you were capable of if given the chance. And now... Now I know, she said simply. You're the kind of man who fixes a wagon wheel with canvas tape and makes it all the way to Fort Branson. The kind who builds a bridge across a washed-out trail rather than turning back. The kind I want as a partner. Thomas felt something unfurl in his chest, a sense of possibility he hadn't experienced since before the war. I'd like that, he said softly. Both kinds of partnership. Eleanor rose from her desk and moved around to stand before him. I should warn you. I'm stubborn, opinionated, and not inclined to let tradition dictate my choices. I can live with that, Thomas replied, standing to face her. I'm stubborn myself, unconventional, and apparently scandalous in my repair methods. She laughed. The sound warming him more than any fire could will cause quite a stir. Let them stir, Thomas said, surprising himself with his boldness. He reached for her hand, and she met him halfway, their fingers intertwining. A commotion outside drew their attention. Looking out the window, they saw Marshall Harden gesturing angrily at the council members who appeared to be dismissing his concerns. Seems the marshal is the last holdout, Eleanor observed. He never did approve of my methods, Thomas said. More awe of independent-minded women, for that matter. Eleanor squeezed his hand. His approval isn't required. The next morning, Thomas opened his cobblers shop as usual, though his mind was far from boot repairs. He and Eleanor had spent hours discussing their future partnership, both business and personal. They'd agreed to move forward carefully but decisively. He was resoling a pair of work boots when the shop door opened, admitting Councilman Williams. Thomas set aside his work and stood to greet the councilman. Mister Williams, he acknowledged neutrally. Reed, Williams replied, glancing around the modest shop. The council has reached a decision regarding your... Innovation. Thomas waited, maintaining a calm exterior despite his racing thoughts. We believe, Williams continued, that your repair tape could indeed bring positive attention to Cottonwood Springs. The council would like to propose an arrangement. What kind of arrangement? We would provide space for a proper workshop, funding for materials, and official recognition as a town enterprise. In exchange, Cottonwood Springs would receive a percentage of your army contract and recognition as the home of the innovation. Thomas considered this unexpected offer. It was generous on its face, but he recognized the underlying attempt to control his invention and keep him tied to the but he recognized the underlying attempt to control his invention and keep him tied to the town. I appreciate the offer, he said carefully, but I've already made arrangements with Miss Wells. We're establishing a partnership to produce and distribute the tape with operations in both Cottonwood Springs and Fort Branson. Williams frowned. I see. That's disappointing. However, Thomas continued, I would be open to discussing how Cottonwood Springs might be involved. Perhaps as the first territorial distributor for civilian use. This concession seemed to mollify Williams somewhat. The council would be interested in such an arrangement. After Williams departed, Thomas returned to his boot repair, but his mind was already racing ahead to the changes coming. By week's end, he and Eleanor had formalized their business partnership and announced their intention to expand to Fort Branson. The town's reaction was mixed. Some, like Buchanan and the blacksmith, expressed genuine support. Others, including Marshal Hardin, remained skeptical of both Thomas's invention and his sudden rise in prominence. Two weeks later, Thomas stood on the loading dock of the trading post, supervising the loading of his cobblers' equipment and personal belongings onto one of Eleanor's wagons. He would establish a workshop in Fort Branson while maintaining a smaller presence in Cottonwood Springs. Ready for a new beginning, Eleanor asked, joining him on the dock. She wore her practical traveling clothes, her hair neatly braided beneath her hat. More than ready, Thomas replied. As they prepared to depart, a commotion drew their attention. Marshal Hardin was approaching rapidly on horseback, followed by the council members in a town wagon. Thomas tensed, wondering if they had come to create one final obstacle. Reed, Hardin called as he dismounted. Hold up there. Thomas stepped forward. Is there a problem, Marshal? To his surprise, Hardin looked uncomfortable rather than confrontational. Council has something to say to you before you leave. Williams cleared his throat as he approached. Mister Reed, it has come to our attention that your repair method may have more merit than we initially recognized. Thomas raised an eyebrow but remained silent. The fact is, Williams continued, we've received a letter from Fort Branson. The quartermaster speaks highly of your innovation, and the army is interested in expanding your contract to include other outposts in the territory. I'm aware, Thomas replied. That's part of why we're establishing operations there. Williams nodded. Yes, well, the council has reconsidered its position. We believe Cottonwood Springs should fully support your enterprise, as it reflects well on our community's spirit of innovation. Thomas glanced at Eleanor, who looked as surprised as he felt by this sudden reversal. What exactly are you proposing, Thomas asked? Official recognition of your invention as a Cottonwood Springs innovation, Williams explained. Full support for your expansion to Fort Branson, and assistance with distribution throughout the territory. Eleanor stepped forward. And what would you expect in return, councilman? Williams smiled thinly, merely appropriate acknowledgement of Cottonwood Springs's role in fostering such innovation. And perhaps a suitable demonstration for the territorial governor when he visits next month. Thomas considered the offer. It was essentially what he and Eleanor had already planned, but with the council's blessing and attempt to claim some credit, attached. I think that could be arranged, he said finally, provided there's no interference with our business operations. None whatsoever, Williams assured him. The council merely wishes to support local enterprise. As they finalized the details of this unexpected arrangement, Thomas noticed Marshal Hardin standing apart from the others, his expression unreadable. When the council members returned to their wagon, Hardin approached Thomas directly. Still don't think tape belongs on a wagon wheel, he said gruffly. Thomas nodded. I understand your position, Marshal. Hardin hesitated, then grudgingly extended his hand. But it got to Fort Branson and back. Can't argue with results. Thomas shook the offered hand, recognizing that this was as close to approval as he was likely to get from the marshal. With final preparations complete, Thomas climbed onto the wagon seat beside Eleanor. As they set off, he couldn't help looking back at the small town that had been his home for three years. Despite its initial resistance to his ideas, Cottonwood Springs had eventually, if reluctantly, come to accept him. Having second thoughts, Eleanor asked, noticing his backward glance, Thomas shook his head. No. Just appreciating how much has changed in a few weeks. All because of a temporary repair with canvas tape. Eleanor smiled. Sometimes the most unlikely fixes turn out to be exactly what's needed. As they traveled the now familiar trail toward Fort Branson and their new beginning, Thomas reflected on the truth of her words. His unconventional repair had fixed more than just a wagon wheel. It had repaired his sense of purpose and opened a door to possibilities he'd thought closed forever. The distant howl of a coyote, the same sound that had punctuated his confrontation with Marshal Hardin weeks ago, now seemed less like a warning and more like a welcome to the open territory ahead. You know, Eleanor said as they crested a hill, the army quartermaster told me something interesting before we left Fort Branson. What's that, Thomas asked. He said the cobbler who fixed a wagon wheel with tape might just revolutionize field repairs across the territory. She glanced at him with a smile, and I believe he's right. Thomas returned her smile, feeling truly at home for the first time since the war. Not in a place, but beside the woman who had believed in him when no one else would. Well, he said, taking her hand in his, I suppose even a cobbler can find his proper place in the world. Eleanor's laugh carried on the breeze as their wagon rolled toward the horizon and the future they would build together, one ingenious repair at a time.